For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next, is this on? Can you hear me out there? Barely. Okay. I'm, okay, I think, I think you can hear me now. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, October 9th, at 9:00 AM here at the Community Center. There will be a special meeting on Monday, September 28th, at 6:30 at Island View Restaurant to meet the candidates for the upcoming election. Can I get a clarification? Is the Monday meeting at 6:00 or 6:30?
The meeting starts actually at 6:30. 6 o'clock is just for like a meet and greet, refreshments. Yes, sir. So 6 o'clock, and then the meeting actually at 6:30.
Okay. If you have not yet, please silence your cell phones. Okay. Going into the agenda, the first item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any public comment? Chrissy, call the question.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes. Going on to the action agenda, the first item is Public Hearing Resolution Number 2020-925-9029. A resolution of Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to establish and adopt a final budget for the fiscal year 2021 based on the estimate of revenues and expenditures for the district's general utility and golf funds, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. Is there a motion?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any public comment? To approve the budget. It's been, it's been moved and seconded to approve the budget, and now we're opening it for public comment. Seeing none, Chrissy, call the question.
Supervisor Brooks?
She's got a question.
Okay, it's my first question, sorry.
Okay. We've come up-
Ma'am, you gotta come to the podium and say your name for the minutes, I'm sorry.
Tony Hicks. Did we get a budget review as a homeowner?
We have been reviewing the budget for the last several board meetings, and it's been online. And it's in the packet for this week, and if there's any public comments or questions on it, we're happy-
So you're gonna pass it today, but we get, we get it next week?
Well, it's been online.
Okay, I don't have email. You don't have my online number.
Okay, but it's been, it's been public record. It can be reviewed and approved, or reviewed at the district offices. And if you had any particular questions on it, you could raise them now at public comment. The board has been, like I say, reviewing this for the last several months, so we've worked out all of the bumps that we think are in there.
Because of the COVID?
No, not because of COVID at all. It's our regular process. It takes several months to put together the budget for the next fiscal year.
Right.
And, and we've put it together. We've now finalized it, and there's no changes from what we finalized at the last meeting.
So there's no way I can stop it, or review it, or do anything? You're just telling me I'm hard out of luck because I haven't seen it?
Well-
Or anybody else that I know?
Okay, I'm telling you that it's been available for review.
Okay, but you're telling me directly as one-to-one?
That, that we've been through the review and discussion process over the last several months, and we're adopting it today.
Okay.
Just the plan, yes. Any further public comment? Seeing none? Call the question.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes. The next action item is Resolution Number 2020-925-30. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to amend the recreation facility community fees for fiscal year 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Staff, wanna give us a kind of a rundown? This was a correction.
Good morning, Supervisors. The recreation fees, we caught an error that had occurred on, or a couple errors that occurred on what was initially put in. What was sent and published weren't exactly the same thing, so that's why we're bringing it back for your review this morning. In the memo, you can see where the errors occurred and where the corrections are, and as it should look.
Okay. Any board discussion? Questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, Chrissy, call the question.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes. The next item is Resolution 2020-925-31. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve a driveway variance request from Hornet Homes for 38% of the front yard. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any board discussion? Any, does staff wanna give us kind of a review on this one? I've expressed some concerns to staff that this is one of those things that has been discussed over the years, and, you know, we've got the rule in place. Are we going to enforce it or not?
Correct, so this is a pretty straightforward request from the board for approval. This is a brand-new construction permit that was pulled by Hornet Homes. It's going in the Magnolia Place location. We provided in my memo how many homes have driveways exceeding the 30% rule as it stands now. There's two out of 18 currently that do surpass that limit, which were grandfathered in before we decided to start bringing this to the board. So he's just requesting whether he's allowed to put that second driveway connection in or not. Without the second driveway connection, he would be in compliance, and it would only be about 20% of the surface area that he'd be covering with the initial driveway.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I just, looking at the diagram, it just appears to me that there is still, you know, a very nice front yard, and therefore, I would vote to approve it myself.
Any other board comment?
I have a question. Does Magnolia Place have any rules that would be, that would cause a problem with this?
Not in regards to driveways or construction, no.
Okay. So that little added part to make it a U driveway changes it from 20% to 38%?
Correct.
There isn't much to add.
Yeah, I think this is just an unfortunate situation, but how the front yard is defined because, in the, in the shape of the house.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'd classify that as unfortunate. It's the design of the way the property is laid out in conjunction with the rules that we have in place. That would be my concern. You know, if we're, if we're going to approve every variance that comes to us, why even have the rule? I think it's a good rule myself.
I don't disagree it's a good rule, but I think, given this situation, it would be foolish of us to impede its progress, which has been pretty significant. And I think the project is good for Sun and Lake, so I'd be in favor of granting the variance.
Any other board comment?
Is this already under construction? No.
The house is under construction, I believe.
They started the clearing process and the building process, but we've only approved the one driveway. So he's only paid for and approved one driveway. As of this moment, he is not allowed to put in that second driveway connection until the board approves it, or if the board approves it.
Are you kind of late?
No, it's not late.
No, I'm just surprised that they didn't-
Oh, they didn't bring it earlier?
They didn't do this earlier, or something like that?
My understanding, it was a late request from the homeowner, or the future homeowner.
Okay.
Any public comment on this item? Okay. Chrissy, call the question.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
No. The next item is Resolution 2020-925-32. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of a First Amendment to the First Supplemental Trust and Denture and Memorandum of Understanding, providing an effective date. If our attorney can give us-
Motion, we need a motion on this item?
Yes, we do. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so we talked about this last board meeting there. Based on that discussion, we went back and had some additional discussions. The bondholder and trustee basically agreed that they will be taking on all of the negotiations with the property owners. They will, once they have a proposed settlement agreement with the property owners, they will bring that settlement agreement to General Manager for approval. They will pay us $50 for that review process for each settlement agreement. And then, so it basically eliminates the prior version. There was gonna be a lot more work for the district to do, so now we are not taking on any of that additional work. The bondholder and trustee are gonna do those negotiations, and we just have to basically approve them. So this, the new version reduces, it still reduces the, the bond interest rate from 10% down to 0%. We will maintain our 1% collection fee that we've been getting. We'll get paid $50 for each settlement agreement that we review, and that review will be done by General Manager.
Question. What exactly is the General Manager gonna review? And make a decision on?
On whether or not to approve the settlement agreement. Because the basically, you know, the, we can, we can, all the district can negotiate with is the bonds, I mean, the interest and penalties that have accrued. We cannot change the assessments that have accrued. The bondholder can do whatever they want with the outstanding bond amount, that's up to them. But the, in order to make these lots, I guess, marketable, considering all of the, the issued lots that the county has, we're gonna have to reduce, greatly reduce the amount of outstanding principal, I mean, outstanding interest and penalties that are on some of these lots. So, that's gonna be the main negotiating point.
Do we have any criteria as to how the Tanya's gonna make these decisions, or do we need to, or?
It's up to the board. You know, we, I think generally right now, we have, she's got some leeway when it comes to penalties and interest on what she's allowed to write off. Anything, Tanya, do you have any idea off the top of your head what that amount is?
There's nothing in policy. It's been, over the last few years, it's been minimal. I haven't had a request as such in a long time, but I do know that there has been some requests brought to the board in the past as well, so.
I don't have a dollar threshold.
So the board would like to place a dollar threshold. Omar, what are our, do you know what our average penalties and interest on these lots range from?
No.
The penalties and interest make up the majority, in my understanding, the majority of what's owed on a lot of these properties, because the actual assessments themselves are smaller than the outstanding principal and, I mean, outstanding interest and penalties. If you'd like us to research that, we can. Or if you wanna put a cap on it, you can put a cap on it now, and if it exceeds that cap, then we can bring it to the board for any settlement agreement.
Let me play devil's advocate. If Tanya gets one and she says no, what would happen?
They would have, the bondholder would have to go back and try and renegotiate a different settlement agreement.
To bring her a whole nother, so we're out of it either way.
Correct.
Okay.
So I, I think, from my perspective, what I would understand is that the goal is to get these properties out of rearage so that they are paying their assessments and whatever else is due ongoing, so that they don't get foreclosed on, and we get the revenue that we anticipate. And the goal would be to make sure that Tanya has reviewed it to see that they're not giving away anything that is really ours other than potentially the penalties and interest. And to the extent that we can get it settled and back onto the active rolls and collect the past assessments, I think we're good.
That is the goal. As to, the property retention is the goal of this entire process.
But I think she still needs to review them to be sure that the agreements are not giving away something that we aren't ready to give away.
Correct.
Okay. We're approving it as to form. There were a few points that I've raised with, with Tanya and David that I wanted to bring up. The key is, we need to standardize the signature blocks. There's a few places where it refers to the chairman of the Board of Supervisors as opposed to the president of the Board of Supervisors, so that's a pretty simple thing. In the Memorandum of Understanding, which I understand, they, they drafted, they changed, they has to, they have, but it really should be in context with the rest of that sentence, it has, because there's another has and an it's in that same sentence, so.
Where, I'm sorry, where were you?
On the whereas that is highlighted in the, on the first page.
Exhibit B.
What page?
It's Exhibit B, first page. Of the revised Exhibit B.
Oh, I think the thing that just came out?
Yeah. At the, at the bottom, going down, there you go. Where you got a highlight there, where they've changed they has to they have, because have would be correct with they, but it really should be it, because in the, in the second line of that sentence, you can see has properly, and further over, almost off the screen there, is another it's. So it really is talking about us as the issuer, and we are an it rather than a they. So that's a, that's a minor change. On the second page, there is the first whereas, it says the district, yet in the document, we've defined district as the issuer, and it's issuer everywhere else in the document, so we're changing district to issuer. And then, a, a more pertinent fact is a little bit further down, where it's in, let's see, you're too far down now, I'm sorry. Go back up to the now, therefore, and, okay, right there is good. So, we're saying in Section 1 that all the definitions are in the agreement. In Section 2, we're referencing a bondholder. And further down in Section 2, we're saying that both the trustee and the bondholder acknowledge and agree. And I couldn't find a definition of bondholder in the base agreement. There's a majority bondholder. But if the bondholder is acknowledging and agreeing, they need to be a part of this agreement as well, so we need to add a signature block for the major bondholder, and be sure that that's defined properly in the agreement. Those were the key things I had from a substantive point for form. There's obviously still some blanks here because there's some things that need to be clarified, but the general form, other than those corrections, I was okay with. Anyone else? Any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, call the question.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Wait, show this guy.
Oh, did you come up, did you wanna?
I just stated I'd had no clue as to what you're talking about.
You need to give us your name again, because we're recording all this.
Tony Hicks.
Mr. Schumacher, can you give us a little definition here?
The short version is, there are, there is a, there's a bond over certain properties in the district. That bond is in delinquencies, and the bondholder is trying to come up with a way to prevent the bonded properties from sheeting back to the county, bringing them into compliance so that they will maintain, be maintained on the district rolls, and the bondholder will be able to enforce his bond. As if they don't, if they don't figure out a way to resolve this issue, in all likelihood, the bonded properties will sheet back to the county.
So for, for a little further clarification in, in layman's terms, the, the properties in question had utilities or some improvements made on them that were paid for with a bond. The bond became an obligation of the property owner. The property owner has not been paying the bonds, or in some cases, the assessments that are due, and the bond payments and the assessments have been accruing penalty and interest for years. At some point, the property has passed due assessments, bonds, penalties, and interest that far exceed the value of the property. The property owner walks away from it. The county, or the district, or the bondholder forecloses on the property, and it becomes neglect. The county, at this point, has foreclosed on a lot of properties because they haven't paid their county taxes. The bondholder sees his problem. He's entitled to the penalties and interest, but he's saying, I don't want any more of these properties to is cheap to the county, because when the county forecloses, the bond is erased. So the bondholder gets nothing. So the bondholder is now saying, I wanna negotiate with whatever properties are out there, and get them to pay the bond, forgive the penalties and interest, and negotiate a settlement, get them current so that they can continue paying future bond payments, and future assessments, and future county taxes, without it being, putting a lot of bad money into a property that now they owe more money on than it's worth. So it's, it's a negotiation to try to get property back into good graces, and assessments and fees coming back into all the sources that should be getting those assessments and fees. So it's a negotiation. And we're, we're giving them the right to do that negotiation. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Did I say anything wrong, Mr. Attorney?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, call the question.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to discussion of land clearing between residential lots and golf courses. So this is not an action item, it's a discussion item.
Good morning, Supervisors. In May, the board approved some revisions to the policy manual in relation to clearing property, abutting the golf courses and the permit process. What I have in front of you today is a draft form that a homeowner can complete to request maintenance their property and the golf courses. This applies, this form would apply to both Deer Run and Turtle Run. I would like to mention a slide, a change to number 3, where it says no wetlands will be cleared and all maintenance performed. I'd like to remove where it says on the Turtle Run Golf Course, I'd like to say adjacent to the Turtle Run Golf Course in the Scrub J Habitat Area, also right after Turtle Run Golf Course.
Conservation area.
Conservation area, I'm sorry. So I would like to add a little bit of additional wording to that. So, so as part of the process, the homeowner would fill out the form. Staff would review and, and look at the area that they're requesting some maintenance, and come up basically with a estimated cost. So the cost would include any labor, mechanical equipment, any, what about, or maybe chemicals, if that's the case. So, so staff would come up with a estimated cost, and then we would provide the homeowner with that information. There's some additional Scrub J Conservation Area interim management guidelines also attached, if it is a, if it's a request on Turtle Run.
So this, I'm sorry, this is adjacent. Anybody in their backyard, we've already discussed that, they're taken care of, between the backyard and the golf course. Correct?
Yes, basically, if there is no view, with the exception of any wetlands, and the wetlands I'm speaking of are specifically to deer. So we're not gonna go in and clear wetlands, okay? But this is mainly, these requests have come in in the past. I mean, it's been since 2012 I've seen a request like this. But if there is no view, or if the homeowner is looking for some sort of a view, then they would do a request form like this. It was adopted by resolution, and so what, I would say, what year, do you know what year what it was? We looked at it. It's been a long time ago, so.
Wetlands on deer are where?
Number 14?
10.
10?
No.
Or 14?
What do we consider a wetland? Maybe that's what-
A 9.
9 on deer?
9 is definitely, yes, but also 14.
You mean where the woods are on the right, that's a wetland?
Yes.
To the right, yeah. And then, do we declare that a wetland based on what?
That's been wetland since-
Huh?
We don't.
There's no, what? There's some lots on the right hand side?
It's a designated wetland by Swift Mud.
Yeah, we, we don't designate any of it. We designate all of the states.
So we have a full wetland-
But number 9 is designated.
We have a map for the entire district that has all the designated wetlands per Swift Mud, so I have a map like that. But yes, off number 9 is, is one area.
Is there lots on the right-hand side of deer? On 9?
No.
So there can't be anybody requesting this?
Correct. I'm speaking more of number, is it 14? What's?
Well, yeah.
What's behind the farm tree?
Yeah.
Where?
That area also.
14, 15 on the left-hand side.
Yeah, behind, behind 13 green.
Behind 13 green.
Behind 13 green?
That, that area from there to where that first house is, left of 14.
That wooded area that you clean? I mean, you already cleared some of it.
We cleared just the edges of it, yeah.
The edge of it, that's considered wetlands?
Mm-hmm.
But there's no property there, is there?
I think, yeah. Yeah.
Lots available. But the lots wouldn't come all the way. So what you're saying is somebody could build off of what? That's what, Bernada? Or Edgewater? They could build off that street, but they wouldn't come all the way to the golf course. So if they wanted to clear between their lot and the golf course, that's where this comes into play, if that happens.
If that happens.
Except in the case of a wetland, we wouldn't clear.
Right.
God forbid. God forbid.
This basically clarifies how we deal with the land that the district owns between any property that the owner owns and the golf course. So we're not maintaining it as golf course, but they don't like the, what's the term? I don't wanna say rough area, because it's really not a rough area.
Overgrowth.
The overgrowth. They don't like the overgrowth on the property between them and the golf course, so they can come to us, and we can look at it and see what it would take to accommodate their request.
Right, and they're responsible to keep it clean, too.[1770.14] Right, and they're responsible to keep it clean, too. The golf courses are responsible to keep it clean. The people that request it are, are responsible to keep it clean once it's done. And that's why it's always been in the preserve. How many requests we had over the last five years on this, something like this?
None in the last five years.
Would, would we be maintaining it at their expense, or are they maintaining it? I don't know how they can maintain it, particularly in the Scrub J area.
Mike, you're speaking of just mowing, or, right, is that what you're thinking?
All right, for instance, where I live, okay, it's been cleaned once or twice. I maintain it now just to keep it up. The golf course doesn't come on there and, and keep it clean at their expense, because it, because it, you know, it's going to get expensive. So, once you ask to have it cleaned, you know, and everybody's been doing the same thing, they've been kind of cleaning it, you know, keeping it clean themselves. So, I mean, we can't go in and clean it, and then keep going back every two or three years, you know, at the cost, cost, the cost of the district.
They're paying for it.
Yeah, if they're paying-
Right, if they're paying for it, right, exactly.
And I just, I'm, I'm not comfortable with them maintaining our property.
If they needed additional clearing, two, three, four years down the road, they would do the same request, and then we would look at it.
Right. It's dead trees, Neil, and, I mean, you know, there's a lot of things that have never been touched, so there's a lot of dead trees, for instance, on Turtle, you know, that, that, you know, people will call up and say, "Can I cut this down?" or whatever. We haven't allowed them to do that before. Now, now, this form will allow them, you know, to do it.
Allows us. It allows, it allows the district staff-
Right, allow us to do it. And see, right now, we don't do it.
Okay, but this allows us to do it at their expense, but keeps them, but keeps them from doing anything to our property.
Correct, right. But, if it's dead trees, and it's on district property, that's up to us to do anyway, right?
But, we don't have to.
On a dead tree?
Well, there's not a requirement that we clear dead trees.
Okay.
And, and in many cases, environmentalists don't like you to do that. I came from California, where the environmentalists threw everything.
And they'd had forests managed, and burning all of them down.
Wouldn't be burned down. We get a little more rain than California does.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, just to clarify, this is not giving property owners right to maintain the property that we own, is that correct?
It's not giving them a right, that's correct.
Okay. Because I don't, I don't think we want to give that right. It opens all kinds of cans of worms that we need to be careful of.
Do we have outstanding requests?
I think we have one or two, that, there are some, I mean, that people have asked about it. Don't overwhelm me, no.
I think one of the goals of this, too, was to have a process in place that everybody was familiar with, that we can put out to the residents, so that we don't have issues on the flip side, where residents go out and do stuff on their own without us knowing about it. And then, we've had several instances recently where a homeowner wanted a different deal, they clear some stuff, and then they put all the debris onto the golf side. So, we're trying to just get a little better clarification. It's came up more, it seems like, on Turtle, because Turtle is being developed a little bit quicker in a few areas that in the past were, you know, Scrub J Habitat, or Palmetto's, or whatever it might be. A good example, talking about maybe the dead tree, or whatever, is if you go down the left to number one on Turtle, there's a ton of property that's been undeveloped for years, there's, you know, Palmetto's, there's thick growth over there. As that's developed out, as homes are built, people want it to look a different way. We're just trying to create a mechanism, so that there's some consistency to what we do, versus having residents kind of do whatever they want, which is how it's seemed to be the last little bit.
Right, and during the policy change in May, we, we made a change to where we said that district staff would be the only, you know, I think the policy initially said that the property owner could go onto our property and make the clearing, but, but we wanted to make the clarification in the policy manual, and then update this form. So, this form is nothing new, it's been out there by resolution. It's just that we want to make a clarification that any maintenance will only be done by, by district staff, or any, you know, removal of dead vegetation initially, or whatever the case is.
So, we're only going to touch property that somebody owns, we're not touching our own property?
No, this is our property.
It's our property.
Oh, it's our property. Well, somebody just said that-
No, it's our property between their property and the golf course.
Yes, our property.
Didn't they just say we're not going to, so, who's going to clean it? After it's cleaned the first time, whose responsibility is it going forward? Is it the district, or is it them, or is it nobody's?
My view would be, it would be the district.
Well, that's not, I mean, that's, that's a lawyer question, isn't it?
Yes, this is property that's owned by the district. So, when I say, the, the process would be, if they want it cleared, they would go, they would fill out this form, we would give them a price, the district would clear it, and it would remain, it would clear, and then would go back to, to its natural growth, and when they wanted to clear it again, they would submit another form asking for it to be cleared again, because that's our property. They can't clear it.
Okay, do we plan on maintaining our property after it's cleared, or we're just going to let it go?
Well, we kind of do now.
Yeah, it's not, it's not so much of an issue of, of maintaining it.
Right.
If you have an undeveloped area, let's use number one again as an example, right now, there's very little done in it. In the plan that we put together a couple of years ago, all it says is that every few years, at our discretion, we'll go in and use the machine to mulch those areas, to, to stay in line with the Scrub J Habitat guidelines, with, you know, keeping undergrowth and stuff at a minimum. So, right now, budget-wise, there's a very minimal cost to that. As it's developed out, and people want it to be an open golf course view, or whatever it is that we, that they petition and we agree to, that then has a different cost associated with it. So, the budget, as, as you're built out and developed out, the budget, because right now, you're, you have, let's say, left of number one, there's two acres right there that we really don't do a lot with, except once every third year right now, based on our management guideline. If that goes to where we're having to go around and spray that, you know, six times a summer, there's a different cost associated with that. So, budget-wise, it's a different consideration moving forward. We're just trying to make sure as maintained area increases, that we have some mechanism to say, "This is how much it costs to do that." It, it's not necessarily a, a back and forth with the homeowner, it's that if we choose as a district to increase those maintained areas, which might be a valid, you know, thing from a homeowner that builds a house along the left of number one, but, right now, we don't budget for it, we're trying to create some consistency on how we would do that moving forward, where one homeowner doesn't think, "Well, this is the way this is done, but my lot's done different." And-
So, for Turtle Run, we have a management plan, or, or a maintenance plan, I should say, a level, we, level one, two, and three, right now. And, as we see new development in Turtle, that, those maintenance plans may change. So, level one, two, and three, we have a map, you know, and we, and that's how Earl, you know, looks at the maintenance as far as Turtle Run.
Does this take the, a lot of the clearing and, and cost out of the hands of the supervisors? Because, quite frankly, I don't agree with what we do in some areas. Most of the areas I do, but, there's stuff that's, it's been a mess for a couple of years, and I, I just don't want that to be taken from the supervisors, in case we decide we want a place cleared up, that's on our property.
I, I don't think this takes anything from the supervisors. It's district property, and we can maintain it however we want.
Yeah, well, we are, however somebody wants, you know.
Well, but, we're, we're the Board of Supervisors, so if there's something we want addressed, we can tell the staff we want it addressed.
Okay, well, that's, I'm okay with that, then.
And the, I think the point is that this land is natural land, we can maintain it the way that we want, and if the homeowner adjacent to it would like us to do something different with it, we will look at that, tell them what it would cost to do that, and we'll do that, but it's still a natural area. It's not a, it's not a manicured parkland, it's a natural area of the environment between their property and ours. They can maintain their property, they can't maintain our park.
When people buy this property, do, do they not know what's going on with this area, with these areas? The majority, no, actually.
If, if they do their homework, they do it.
If they do, I mean, they should, theoretically, they should know what they're buying. I deal with the turf people all the time, and they don't have a clue what goes on, okay? So, they'll come back to us and say, "What do we do?" Now, in the past, you would have to get ahold of, who was the person that we used to use? Greg Olson. He would have to come in, he worked for the State of Florida, and tell us what to do.
Kurt Olson.
Kurt Olson.
Kurt Olson.
Greg Olson's a football player, that's right.
That, that's in the Scrub J habitat.
Right, right.
That's in the Scrub J.
Right, and that's what we always did. I'm not quite sure what we're trying to, what are we going to accomplish by doing this? Well, where it all started to come up is, like Earl said, people started to cut and throw everything on the golf course, all right? Piles of branches and everything, all right? They were cutting the district's property? They're cutting, they're cutting their own, they're cutting- Well, why don't we just stop?
Once it's done, how do you stop them?
I understand that, but then go find it.
They, they don't ask, they just do it.
What we're trying to do is, is to put something in place- Because people are abusing stuff and doing this, we're going to pass a rule that says, "We're not, it's okay, you don't have to abuse it, now you just got to pay for it, but you can still do it?"
We're, we're just trying to create a process, though it's not whatever anybody wants to do.
Right now, they can do what they want.
No, they can't.
They do. They're not supposed to, but they do. I mean, you can't, and you do whatever, right, you're right. You know, I agree with you exactly a hundred percent, what you just said, is, you know, we're trying to control and, and keep it natural. We don't want to go in there and just rip everything out, you know? And, and that's what we've always tried to do.
Right. So, the, I think the question that Ray is raising is a good one, and, again, going to my experience in California, we had somebody do something to our property that we didn't authorize, but the county came back on us for triple damages to restore the area. Do we need to put some kind of penalty in place for residents who do something to our property without permission? Should that be a part of this?
Yeah, I would say that would, that would already be a core process, you know, the, the issue becomes proving it, you know. If someone comes on a district property and destroys district property, there, that's trespass and, and damages, but you've got to prove it, so.
Well, destroy is a relative term, if we haven't defined it as well. I mean, basically, we're, what we're saying is, we don't want the property owner doing anything to our property, we want to work with them to, to find a compromise that will satisfy them. But, we don't want them working on our property.
Correct.
Correct.
So, this is our, this is our answer, we're going to say, "We'll do it for you, but we're going to charge you." Yeah. If we agree, if we agree, right now, well, I mean-
We, we may not agree with what they want.
Right, right, exactly.
They may want us to take down four trees.
Somebody may want to strip everything. Now, we have people that live on number three, don't even want to, don't even want us to go in there and touch their area, you know, because he always says, "I moved here because of, you know, the surrounding area, and I don't want to see the golf course." So, we have never, ever touched it. We get as far as his is, and we stop, and we go on, you know, and clean the area. Well, that's not right either.
We also have people that want it cleared, don't, too, in fairness, you know.
Right, right, exactly. It's just like Joe said, if, you know, some want, some don't, you know? So, that's why this form is actually good, because we know what's going on.
And, and they've signed, and we've signed, and everybody's in agreement as to what the process is going to be.
Exactly.
All this does is create the vehicle for them to express their wants.
Yes.
And it's up to us whether we comply or whether we don't.
Right.
It's that simple.
Yes.
I mean, there's nothing here that obligates us to anything, just because they fill out a form.
Right, exactly.
At least, that's how I see it.
Well, I get it, too, so.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if, if somebody wants to have it maintained over the next two or three years, after it's done, why don't we give them the cost of what it would cost to do it, and just, that'll end that conversation.
We could, that would be one of the things they could request.
And that's what this is about.
Yeah.
You know, if they want it, then they can pay for it. So, if they said, "I want you to cut it, and then I want you to maintain it, how much is it going to cost me a year to maintain it?" We'll do that, okay? Yes.
As long as it's within the auspices of the conservation agreement, or conservation agreement.
Okay, any further board discussion? Any public comment?
I've been known as a troublemaker. My name is Tony Hicks. My question is, if somebody wanted a clear view, would the neighbors on both sides be informed?
No.
I mean, many people, like you stated, buy a house because of what they have around them. I've known people that liked to be in the forest, I'm not one of them, I don't want a tree anywhere near my home. But, if I were someone that wanted a forest, and my neighbors on both sides, or one side, agreed, and the other one didn't, then you have a problem, you have a problem there, in my point of view. I was just wondering if there was a stipulation in there.
There is not at this point.
No.
Good question, that's a good question.
Yep, good question.
We have a both- Mark Camp, resident. Every year, since I was, I've been here, there's a-
It's older.
Every year, they have a board that reviews people looking for appeals on their properties for various reasons. One of them that seems to come up, and on the boards that I've been on, they want to know why they're paying the extra fee for a golf course view, when in fact, they have no view, but they're paying that whatever seven million-
I don't think that, I don't think "view" is referred to. It's golf course property, but I don't think the word "view" is in there.
Okay, let me finish my train of thought here, though. The, the question is, what if somebody, just as she said, what if I have lots on Turtle, wherever, and is this going from my back lot line to the golf course? Is that the area that I could be essentially allowed to clear?
You could essentially be allowed to have us clear, yeah.
Yes, if I could request that for you. So, that might be sixty, eighty, a hundred feet, two hundred feet? And if I want to pay the fee and you agree to it, that would happen, correct? Okay. So, the second question is, kind of follow-up with this young lady said, if you have five lots, and you clear out eighty feet of a lot, a hundred feet wide, you're going to have this kind of little opening there. But, you can't predict what the development is going to be on those next lots, and whether those people want to clear it. I'm just saying, from an aesthetic standpoint, you might have a line of trees, and, and then somebody wants to have a better view of the golf course, they're going to look out and have that cleared, if you approve it. Is that, am I on?
If, if we approved it, yes, that would be the case.
So, I guess the question would be, how would you determine whether you should approve that or not, if those other lots on each side are not developed, and you say, "Well, that won't look aesthetically pleasing to the golf course."
I think that could certainly be part of the process, the aesthetic effects.
Pardon me?
The aesthetic effects could certainly be part of the process for the evaluation.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm asking the question on it.
It's a good question.
Because-
It's a good question. I think we have a specific set of criteria, and maybe we need to develop a set of criteria.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not, I think it's great that you're going to have a process put in place, but it needs to be a workable process, I think. And I think it needs to be fair and equitable to anybody that puts a request in, that's all. Thank you very much.
We're going to have the same problem like on Bonnie Drive right now. We've got somebody building a home that doesn't want the back of the thing cleared, and there's lots on both sides of it, and the houses built there are cleared both ways. So, I, I guess you just better do your due diligence, and that house that they're doing that to might be the only one on Bonnie Drive that it is, and that's, we can't tell people on either side what they want, I don't think.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's just-
And I, and I guess further to, I think what you were saying is, if you own a piece of property, and you want it cleared, you can request that. You can't request that the vacant lots that are not adjacent to yours be cleared. We could clear them if we wanted to, because it's our property, but then whoever bought those lots in the future would be aware that they were cleared.
And I totally, that's what I'm saying, I totally agree. So, you could have something that is cleared, those other lots aren't developed, those people buy those lots, they say, "I don't want to have any removal," and it's going to look, it's not going to look good, okay? There's a lot of lots out here that have, they're a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet from the golf course, you know, and so, I'm just, it's just a thought. the golf course, you know, and so, I'm just, it's just a thought.
Well, I think one of the big things that has been brought up, and we need to make sure that we take into consideration, is notice, because what we're talking about doing is clearing district property. So if we're, you know, if, if one person requests that some of the district property be cleared, they should have to notify their adjacent neighbors, and then, when it comes before the board, they can come in and say, you know, "One person wants it completely cleared, but 10 people don't want it cleared at all," and the board will make a decision. It's, there's no guarantee that the people that fill out this form are going to get what they want, because ultimately, it's district property, and we have the right to do what we want to with it, as long as it's within the, the auspices of the conservation area.
And there could also be compromises, where maybe we agree to thin it, so there's some view, but not clear it completely. Nothing says we have to clear it completely.
Exactly.
It's whatever we agree to.
Correct.
So, I mean, I think it's flexible enough to work. It's a careful-
The question that was just raised, however, raises another question. Is this going to be reviewed and approved at staff level, or is everyone going to come to the board for review and approval?
That's a good question.
You're doing a form like this, it's got to come to the board.
Agreed. At least, in this, in the current, in the current iterations, right now, I believe that everyone would have to come to the board, I would agree with that.
Yeah, and especially-
I mean, based on what you said before, we're not talking in a lot of times, I mean, it hasn't happened the last five years.
The policy has been in place since 2006. That was the original resolution, I believe, so.
But our hope is that it will come to this board, instead of people just going and doing what they want. That's the goal.
That's what we're hoping.
There is something in place, people are aware of it, they're familiar with it, and instead of just going and doing whatever they want, or having their landscaper, or their guy who comes and clears the lot initially do more than what they're supposed to do.
I'm going to pull this highly controversial, you should come to the board.
Oh, agreed. And when we, when we went through this all, I know we've used the term "clear," never did we discuss this as if we were going to go clear everything, it was more of a lifting live oak trees, or lifting, you know, larger specimen trees, and clearing underbrush. It wasn't ever intended to just clear cut a lot.
Right, and especially on Turtle Run, scrub, you know, scrub oaks are going to stay. I mean, that's, the underbrush areas, definitely-
So maybe there's some verbiage in there that specifies size, diameter of trees, and that we won't, you know, remove those, or something.
And if, if you're going to want people to ask their neighbors about it, that should be in here. I mean, we should put something in here, you know, "We need you to contact," or however you want to word it, but if, if we're going to ask them that question, you might as well tell them upfront.
Yeah, I, I think it's, the obligation is on the district to do the notification, but they should know that we are going to notify the neighbors, so they can maybe have that discussion upfront.
I see no reason you can't move forward with the proposal the way it's written. It becomes contentious, and we're dealing with it every month, so look at revision. I mean, we have to start somewhere, and we don't have that point, so.
Yeah, and this is, like I say, this is just a discussion item, so I think that once we get it fleshed out, we'll bring it to the board for approval, and say, "This is what the form is going to be."
I think that's a good idea.
Oh, the policy's already in place, okay.
Just the procedure we're working on.
Cliffwood property owner, I still-
No, sir!
Cliffwood property owner. Is there any kind of rule of thumb, or policy with regard to how much property that is golf course property, that, in terms of, let's say, the width, that would be considered to be maintained by the district? For example, the, the lots on Deer Run, on many of the holes, the, the property owner's lot is set back from the golf course 50, 60, 100 yards.
At least.
Somebody cleared that. Did the developer pay for that? I doubt it. Who's maintaining it? The district's maintaining it.
Most cases, probably.
No. In some areas, we do maintain-
You'd have to say-
Some areas, Earl, you know, Earl does it, so.
See, you'd have to say that a property owner on Deer Run gets a lot more for his money in terms of view than a property owner on Turtle Run.
But it's not a conservation area on Deer either, versus, it's a scrub jay over in the preserve.
I understand all, but many of those scrub jay habitats on Turtle Run have been vacated, haven't they not?
Not supposed to be. I don't believe, I think they're still considered scrub jay.
Well, a lot of those lots were cleared that were scrub jay habitat. But going back 10 years, some people that cleared a, like, five-yard section between their lot and the golf course, were required to go back and reestablish a, essentially, the vegetation that was there before, at their expense.
Right.
Right.
But now, we're going to consider clearing that.
Well-
Not completely clearing it.
Yeah, we, we will-
It's still not going to be completely-
We'll look at any requests, we won't necessarily approve a request, and it will be very difficult to approve things in the scrub jay area.
Okay. So if, if it were to be essentially vegetation that obscures your view of the golf course, why would you charge a premium for that property because it's adjacent to the golf course?
View is not part of the ordinance, or part of the regulation. It's golf course frontage, I mean, there's nothing about view in there.
Fair. I don't own one of those properties, but it, it seems like we're really getting tangled up in our own underwear here.
I don't feel very tangled at this point. Okay, yeah, I think good direction there, some things to clarify, and I think, I think I, I'm, you know, inclined to agree with Supervisor Branson, that I think we've got, the policy is in place, it's just a matter of going forward. If you get a request, I think you can move forward with handling it, and we'll just clean up things and, and bring, bring the procedure back for a final look.
Understood.
The only thing that I, you might consider is a notification process for adjacent property.
Yeah.
I mean, that probably should be part of it.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Other than that, I think it's fine.
Okay, moving on. Any add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
Yes, we have a petition for speed bump from Robert and Amy Edlow of 3716 Ponce de Leon. They are stating that they wish to have a speed bump placed on our street near our address, and hopefully prevent future accidents. This will slow traffic down and create a safer street. Their mailbox was destroyed recently by a careless driver. The, the request, as far as the names and addresses, are not in compliance with the policy, number one. We have a policy in place where we are requiring 20 adjacent properties to sign the petition itself. But in reviewing their request with our district engineer and Mr. Hurley, I have provided you a map of the area. You can see down towards the right, bottom-hand area of the map, it's the petitioner's address, which is, what did I just say, 3716 Ponce. So, after review of their request, the district is not, I mean, you want to, you want to say anything else?
Um-
We're, we're not going to recommend a speed bump in this area, and there's a reason why. As you approach their home from the north, we have a three-way stop, which is existing at Romero Street and Ponce. And then, there's 413 feet between their home and the three-way stop, and then, as you approach Granada Boulevard, it's another 262 feet as you approach Granada. So we already have two speed calming devices between their address. Number one is the three-way stop, number two is the, the curve, which is a 90-degree angle curve. So those are already two speed calming devices in this area. We have, as a rule of thumb, 600 feet is, is approximate between speed tables, and that's what we have used consistently throughout the district. And because of what we have, we wouldn't want a speed table, and then, as you approach a 90-degree turn, it's only 262 feet. So the district is not, not recommending a speed bump for this particular area.
Is there anybody from the public here to speak on this?
Anybody from the public to speak on it?
No.
Seeing none, any board discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question. Have we ever put the speed, what's that machine called? I'm sorry. Speed machine?
There-
Have we ever put it there to see what happens?
Uh, not yet, we haven't. We talked about putting it there, because it's such a short distance, you know? There are some things that we could do, we could add more paint on the road, slow down, whatever, but it's really a short distance, and, you know, it's, I mean-
I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing, I'm just curious.
Yes, right. That, that's where we're going next with it.
Yeah.
And I talked about it, but, you know, it's going to give us this, you know, you know, it's going to give us the speed and how many cars, but still, the distance, you know, doesn't call for a speed bump in that area, the length of it.
Mike, my point is, if people are speeding there, and it's a problem area, we have to figure out a way to make it work.
Right.
You can't do that. I mean, these people, I'm sure they have a reason, but I think we use our own machine, which is why we bought it.
Yeah, yes.
To find out for sure. And if there is a speeding problem there, the challenge to us-
Is to slow it down.
Was to figure out how to fix it.
Right.
I don't have the answer.
Right, and that's what we're working on, Ray, right now, you know, a, a way to slow them down without adding more speed bumps every other road.
Well, let's put the machine there, and let's see what's going on.
Right.
I'm not sure that we have that big a problem there, but the speed monitor will tell us how big the problem is. I mean, my guess is that if you're speeding around that curve, you're going to take out a mailbox, because you're going too fast for the conditions.
Exactly.
I take that curve all the time, to get out from where I live.
About how fast you go.
You've got to, you can't go that fast.
Exactly, you have to slow down.
That's why I'm saying, the machine probably will give us an indication.
Yeah, so I, I think we're going to find out, because there isn't a lot of speeding going on on that curve, and, but I think we need to find that out to be sure. If, if we're wrong, then we need to figure out a solution, but I think-
But I, I do agree with you on that existing speed table. That thing is, I don't know if these things wear down or what have you, but it's not as effective as most that we have throughout the complex. So I think there, we need to challenge ourselves, either raise it somehow.
Right.
Paint it, sign it, do something a little different.
And that's what we're in the process of.
Because that's going to become a problem down the road. So I would agree with that.
Is that the one between the two three-way stops, Pascaya and Romero?
Yeah, I mean, it's really nothing to go over. I mean, like I said, I do it all the time, and you can't go faster than 15 or 20. I've seen cars do it, not personally.
We hope. Okay.
You can, but it's not good for your shocks.
Yeah. For the next meeting, we'll have a report on that, okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
You want to stay on this subject for a little moment?
If you'd like.
If we can. I guess, I, I didn't realize that you were so efficient putting all this information on the website, on the line.
Well, it's been there for six months.
I know, so I did go back, I did go back and look at it. So I do have a question for you, I'm just curious. If, if, if we put the machine someplace, and we find out that there isn't truly an excessive amount of speeding in an area, what do we do?
I'll, I'll write, well, I just did it on Edgewater, and Tanya just got it, we just talked about it. Edgewater, we had some complaints, somebody said they had a petition, we couldn't find the petition, whoever started it never turned it in, so we did put the sign there. And I just wrote Tanya a letter, saying that I think we have to put speed bumps on Edgewater, because 56, 56% of the cars going down there are speeding, and the only way we're going to slow them down in Edgewater is put, put speed bumps. We, I mean, we even had an accident with a bike, a, a, a bike ran into a golf cart the other morning, and, I mean, the bike was going too fast, that was the problem, you know? I mean, thank God, he hit the back of the golf cart, and not the front, because he would end up probably taking the lady right out of the golf cart. I mean, I mean, it was bad, he got hurt, we took him away in the ambulance, you know? So I did, did talk to Tanya.
Yeah, but we still need time to review that, because again, we have a three-way stop, and then we have a 90-degree turn, and some other things. So there are other means and other ways that we can use traffic calming devices in these areas. So if you, you know, we, we are going to look at that, for sure.
And I, and I think the point, if I'm following Ray, the point is, we can be proactive, we don't have to wait for a question.
Oh, absolutely, that's, that's the case, yeah.
And that's what we've been working on.
Based on your report?
Yes.
I would like for you to revisit Ponce de, Ponce de Leon Boulevard, where you had it in June, Cortez, where you had it also in June, and Columbus Boulevard, where you had it in July. And, and set those up, you can put them on the schedule, send them up again, because if I'm reading the report correctly, it looks like there may be action that needs to be taken.
Okay, yeah.
And then see what, and then get back to us in six weeks, or whatever it is, let us know.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Tanya, are you going to review that Edgewater before next meeting?
Yeah.
Well, I haven't-
What is next meeting?
I haven't seen the data, though, we've given the memo, so.
Well, I just got it, I mean-
Within the next month, we will, for sure, yes, sir.
Okay, staff reports?
I'll go first. We've had 609 watch orders last month, we had 217 code enforcement violations that we, that we served had to write up. We've also had, I guess I got to bring this up, I really didn't want to, but, we've had, had a lot of complaints about people stealing political signs, people moving political signs, residents starting to argue. We actually have the sheriff involved in it right now. We have a resident here today that's been to my office a couple of times already, and I think he wants to speak about the signs, the political signs. I, I just want to make sure everybody understands this, and I've told many people this. The residents do not have the right to move the signs, it's up to the district employees. So if they think a sign is in the wrong place, okay, it's up to them, they can contact us, and we'll make the decision. The residents do not have the right to move any signs, no matter where it is, on Ponce, on-
Excuse me, you're, I'm confused now, because you were talking about political signs-
Well, I'm talking about any sign, sign. I, I mean-
Residents can, can move signs, political signs on their own property.
Yes.
You're talking about street signs.
No, I'm talking about signs anywhere. Okay, say, if you're coming up Columbus, okay, and you see a sign on the side of the road, and it's not your property, you don't have the right to move it. If you have a question, question that you want to, you know, why it's there, they call us, and we'll make the decision. The problem is, is people are moving signs on their own, and, and it's becoming arguments, it's, it's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous what people are doing, okay? So I just want to make everyone understand that if, if they see signs, even if it's the garage sale sign, to let district know, security, code enforcement, whatever, all right? Right now, we have the sheriff involved in it, I have a, I have a letter right here from a lady, saying that people have permission to use a lot. So I think LT wants to speak about that, I don't know if you want to let me do it now, or whatever.
I think public comment?
Okay, but, you know, we've been getting a lot of calls on that, and hopefully, it's going to stop, you know? We get a lot, a lot of calls. I mean, I had one person that, that had, had, had over 20 signs moved. You know, if you, you know?
Okay.
So we've been getting a lot of calls on that stuff there, and I just want to let you know, okay?
Yep.
Anything else I'm saying?
Okay. Other staff comment, or staff reports?
LT, it'll be at public comments.
Yeah.
Just a little short, a little bit longer.
Mike, are you there? Mike?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm, it's, it's, I'm in the room, I'm in the room.
Can you see it?
Can we see you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go real quick over the golf side.
Okay.
Couple of things he wanted me to note. We are starting the pine straw and coquina applications as we do every year leading into season. So the guys are out doing some coquina stuff now, working on the ends of some cart paths. You'll see that on Deer with it being back open. Guys, we've started working on lagoon washouts over on Turtle Run. They're on the back of 16 right now, will be working on the right side of 16 green. We are going back to some areas on 14. Some of the stuff we're doing on 16, we bought some 18-inch limestone granite riprap, if you will, that we're going to put in a few areas where there's direct washout as far as where water is concentrated. So those will be going out in the next week or so. We have locked in our overseeding dates for both Turtle and Deer Run. Turtle will be the 24th of November, Deer Run will be the 8th of December. We tried to space those out around some events that are going on, member events. And we tried to pick what are kind of the slower times. It seems like around Thanksgiving, people go out in and out of town and that kind of continues through Christmas. So we tried to pick times where the golf courses, we wouldn't affect people as much. It'll be the same process as last year, we'll put the seed down. We're going to water pretty heavy for a couple of weeks. It may be that a single sprinkler is running on a hole while you're out there playing. We'll keep that to a minimum. After a week or two, depending on weather, we'll, you know, back that down and get into where we're back to a normal pattern. We have tree grinding of our debris that we generated with the tree printing that we did around primarily Deer Run. My staff will be working on that over the next few weeks, chipping up all that material. We've got some areas of concentration on the range over behind 12 green on Deer. The guys hit some areas that were on 17 Deer this week already, so we'll be working on that. Again, just trying to get ready and leaving into season, so that's really the bulk of what we got going on.
Okay. Not yet.
Hi, good morning supervisors, hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yes.
First off, I would like to update you on our current membership drive. Year to date, we have 88 memberships sold. The total dollar amount in dues is just under $300,000. I spoke to Andy this morning and they have quite a few more in the queue today. And, you know, now that we're nearing October 1st, I think business will pick up even more as we get to that October 1st deadline. Advertising is always something that we talk about. I just wanted to briefly touch on some, some notes of things that we've been doing and some success we've been having. As I've spoke before, social media is one of my big target points going into the season for advertising. I think for a couple of reasons. I think the targeted approach to who, who we're advertising to is phenomenal. The cost per click basically is extremely low. And also the targeted feedback that we get from those that we are targeting is great. You don't get that with the newspaper or radio. You don't, you don't necessarily generate a response unless you're running some kind of coupon or some deal that they need to bring to you. With that being said, our Facebook engagements, and I just want you to note that this is just over the last week with our advertising, and this is just for the Island View Restaurant, not the golf course. In the last week, we have reached over 12,000 people with our advertising and we have had over 2,500 engagements. Those are people that are engaging in our posts, in our advertising. And we've actually gained 64-page likes just for the Island View Restaurant in the past week. So our Facebook campaign is very strong. As I've told you guys in the past, I've been targeting TripAdvisor, trying to move up. Since we started that about a month ago, we've moved from number 26 in Highlands County to number 18. I'm very pleased with that. It's not that our ratings have necessarily changed. The ratings are positive, I think we're four and a half stars out of five with the restaurant. But just our engagement, actively engaging people to post more reviews and engage on our TripAdvisor has moved us up to number 18. Our goal is to be in the top 10 by the end of 2020. And I think we'll set some new goals, maybe to move into the top five by this time next year. Now, in the last month or so, we have been actively adding comment cards to the check holders with all of our customers coming into the Island View Restaurant. We have received over 172 of these comment cards back. I would say 99% of those are all five out of fives or mostly four out of fives in a couple of categories and have been overwhelmingly positive. Those are on my desk, if you want to come see them, I encourage you to. I think the feedback is very positive. I think that means we're kind of turning the corner here and we're starting to improve our guest experience on a day-to-day basis. Doesn't mean we're going to stop trying to improve, it just means that we are starting to head in the right direction. That's about all I have for you today. If you have any questions for me, I can entertain those at this time.
Mike, I need you to check, it's Ray, I need you to check out something for me. Apparently on Monday, on the 8 o'clock shotgun, there was some confusion and some of our members, or one group of our members, had like three groups on a hole to start off with. And they were led to believe that that was done to accommodate some outsiders. And that would be a no-no if that be the case. Obviously, I was not there, so I, this is coming to me secondhand. So if you would check that out, I'd appreciate it, and let me know so I can get back to this person.
No, absolutely, I'd be happy to do that. And, you know, anytime you get any of those questions, feel free to reach out to me right away. You don't have to wait to a meeting. It's a lot easier to tackle them, this, faster we get that information, it's a lot easier to evaluate and come up with either a solution or an answer. So I would gladly look into that, and just next time, just, you know, shoot me a text or something, we'll look into it faster.
Okay, and then one other thing, just a general comment. These cards that you're getting, I'm sure they're, most people take time to either write a card, it's going to be either very good or very bad. And I'm glad you're getting the ones that are very good. But your challenge is still and continues to be getting people into the restaurant. So the cards, the cards are great, you know, once you get them in there, they can fill them out if they so choose to. But traffic is the number one challenge for you guys. Because if you don't get enough people in there, it don't matter what they think of it, you're going to lose money. So I'm going to keep harping on that, and I want you to keep remembering that. Your challenge is to have, figure out, not just through Facebook or what have you, how are you going to communicate and get people into that restaurant?
No, that's a very good point, and that's, that's part of the engagement process. And as we gain more and more Facebook traction, more people are getting engaged. And if you go on there and see some of the comments, every once in a while, you find somebody that says, hey, where is this place? There's an opportunity for us to gain a new customer. And it creates an opportunity where we get to engage with them right away. So if it's in the newspaper and somebody says, oh, look, there's Island View Restaurant, they will have to reach out to us to contact us via phone or something else.
I mean, I'll just, I'll just throw something out.
At that point, they'll have a clue if they've been here or not. So with our Facebook campaign and all these extra engagements, we are able to communicate with them and reach out to those people right away and gain some new customers.
You know, I'm a great believer in spending money to make money. There's nothing wrong with, just a suggestion. You buy a billboard, October special, buy one, get one free, buy one, get one at half off, entree. I mean, you do something like that, you put it on a billboard, I have to believe you will attract more people than you are right now. Will you make a lot of money on it initially? No, but if you, these people come in and they buy it and they like the service, they like the food, they're going to come back. So I mean, that's just an idea. Facebook is a great way to go, but there's other tools and there's other gimmicks that can be used to attract people to the restaurant.
No, and you're correct, and we use, we use other platforms. I just wanted to bring that one to your attention because it's the one that seems to be gaining the most traction for us. It's not that that's our only tool on our tool belt. We definitely use all sorts and, you know, we have, you know, we run campaigns of different, different sorts with our advertising. I was just bringing to your attention one that is gaining traction.
Okay, but, and this is Craig, if you look at the trend line of your total entrees served per week, I don't see any positive trend at all. And that's, you know, the total number of entrees is a pure indicator of the business that you're having in there. I know signature dishes were significantly down this past week. Could have been the selection of what you wanted. But again, you're not getting an increase in traffic and you have to do something significantly different than you've been doing because it continues to be a drag. I think Ray has brought it up every week. If you take the total labor for the, for the food, food and beverages and the cost of sales, you're losing money every week and we can't keep doing that.
Right, well, in that, in that notion, just to give you some more statistics on that, and listen, I'm not disagreeing with you guys, I'm 100%. We're trying to gain as many customers as we can in our offseason. But statistically, when you compare our numbers from this year over prior years, when it comes to alacard dining, you know, we're, we're right there with 2018, 2017, and 2016 for this time of year in the offseason. The restaurant historically has always lost money in the summertime. The only time that it ever breaks even or makes money is in our prime season. You know, not that that's the goal, I'm just saying that's, that's where we are historically, that we are improving. And with that being said, going through a pandemic with a lot of folks and you can see the engagements on our Facebook and say, hey, listen, we're just not ready to come out and eat yet. There's a lot of people out there that feel that way. So for us to be pulling numbers as we did in 2018 when things were running great, I think we're doing better. Again, it's not the end goal, we want to gain as many customers as possible. Where the restaurant is struggling currently right now is the lack of banquet business. There's nobody having weddings right now, there's no big meetings going on. We have a few here and there, but for the large group of people, we're definitely struggling and we will continue to struggle for a few more months or until this thing starts to subside with the lack of banquet business. I think that'll end up creating a surge on the backend. But as for right now, that's our biggest challenge. Not that we're giving up on the alacard dining, obviously, yes, we want to have as many people come through there as possible. And I think we are gaining some ground there, so I do see all the numbers, I send them to you every week and I, you know, I know we saw a little surge at the tail end of August there, but I think that was due to, you know, some events and things we had. But, you know, the goal is definitely to have as many as possible and, you know, obviously that trend is going to start going up now as we get more people in town. But, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction, I don't think it's all negative.
Just to clarify, at this point, have you had any issues with the occupancy as far as butting up against that maximum occupancy you're allowed during COVID?
We, we have not in just a typical day-to-day business. I know when we did a little 4th of July dining, I know we, we, we got up there. We have had a couple nights where we might have gotten a little bit closer than others, but that's when we may have had some sort of small banquet in the banquet room. And I know a couple golf events, you know, with the, with the membership, we had to think about it a little bit. But I think when we try to space everybody out, I don't think we can actually hit that 50% mark because it's like 180 or 190 people, and I just don't think we're sitting people close enough to challenge that.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that wasn't an issue. Any other comments or questions? Okay, other staff reports?
I just have a few, just want to bring up the golf cart lease RFP was due yesterday. We did receive three different proposals, one from Easy Go Yamaha and Club Car. So we're in the process of analyzing those three proposals. Each RFP proposal had, I believe, six different options that we requested so we can run the numbers and see what works best for us. So we're hoping to have that by the next, next meeting in order for us to make a decision so we can get those carts, if we decide to go down that road, in the pipeline and available for a January 30th delivery or remain and do the dollar opt-out. So we'll have that at the next meeting. And then the golf management RFP is out.
Why are we late?
We've sent that out, we've advertised that. The pre-bid meeting for that is October 1st, it will happen at the Island View Restaurant at 10:00 AM. So just giving you an update that that's going to be taking place here shortly.
Why are we still late on the golf carts? Are we late on the golf carts or is it just my imagination?
No, so the golf cart lease expires 12/31 for January. So we're in advance, we just need to make a decision whether we're going to execute it or decide to use the dollar buyout option and keep our fleet. So we're still making that analysis. We'll have that at the next meeting for you guys to see all the options and make a decision from there.
Does that have to be a resolution?
Yeah.
Hello?
Neil, I got a question for Earl.
Yeah.
Earl, I got a couple of questions. When is, is what we call the season, when does that officially take effect? I mean, in your mind or Billy Castor's? Is it November 1st, October 1st?
You mean based on increased play or you're talking agronomic season or?
Well, yeah, just when we start doing stuff that we don't do in the summer, I mean.
I'd say agronomic.
Leading into trying to get ready for what we call, I guess, our golfing season. We usually start in October.
Okay.
And the goal is by Thanksgiving to have everything in place that we would want to have done. Overseed falls a little bit behind that simply because of weather and temperature and things like that, but like pine straw.
So season starts November 1st or December 1st really, right?
Yeah, I mean, again, we kind of shoot around Thanksgiving. When I first came here, the first year, we were a little bit ahead of that because I was told about, you know, different tournaments that we had, whether it be the Advent Health or Surtoma or different bigger events. So we geared up a little more towards that. I caught a little flack over that because they were technically non-member events. So we, last couple of years, we've kind of backed that up a little bit to concentrate more on what I would call our member, member season.
Okay, and when does our grass cutting maintenance change? Or, or does that change? I was surprised this summer that we had a summer grass cutting schedule, that's why, that's why I ask.
Well, it's, it's more of a difference on Deer Run because of the 110 acres of balea. So it's certainly different in the summertime than it is in winter simply because of the need to mow it more frequently. We now have the added variable of overseed, so as far as fairways and tees and things like that are concerned, it'll actually be, we'll do a little bit more frequent in the winter than we probably even did in the summertime because we use primo pretty heavily on fairways in summer. But usually around October, it's all weather dependent and daylight hours and things like that. But even with a little bit of change in humidity the last week, if that continues, the bales start to slow down a little bit, we won't have to mow it every seven days, it'll be more like every 10 days. But it's dependent on the weather.
And these are questions that I necessarily have, it's questions I get.
Sure.
And the last one is, the question was, I think on number seven on Deer, that whole left side, and there's been some, there's a lot of high grass over there, is that, is that going to stay there? There's, they're building some homes there and the grass is probably three feet high.
Yeah, and that's another area that, again, was an area that we adopted a couple of years ago where we, we go in and bush hog it a couple of times a year. It's just, it's literally that specific area from six green up to where the cart path ends on seven, there's never, there were never any houses, never any lots sold, anything, it was just kind of, so we identified that as an area. It was just kind of, so we identified that as an area that we could not mow every single week or every 10 days or whatever the frequency might be.
Well, it's quite high, it's not been just a week.
Yeah, no, that specific area is usually twice a year that we go in and bush hog it.
Oh, twice on the left side, it's twice a year, okay.
Yeah, and that was done specifically to try to just reduce some man-hours that we could focus more on the golf course itself. That is a good area that, it's not necessarily the same as what we were talking about earlier, but the developer that we discussed earlier, that wanted the variance on the stuff, Hornig, he bought all those lots, my understanding along there, so as those develop, obviously we won't be able to do that anymore because it's going to have to look more consistent with what-
And I think that's probably where the question came from because there was a couple.
So that is one that'll have to change how we do that.
And the other question was on, by seven green, you had cleared a couple of years ago some, I don't know, I think it was that weed, Brazilian weed or something? And it looked nice and got rid of that stuff, but we left a tree there that's like this? Is that going to stay there?
Yeah, I'm going to defer that to Mr. Hurley because that was not a golf course thing, that was a district for the pepper trees.
Yeah, well, it's just, you know, it was a great idea to clear it, but we just left it, you know, and I don't mind because I'm not the one asking the question, but it's been like two years and it's a tree that's still alive, but it's about that far off the ground and it just, it doesn't look very nice, so.
I can get with Mike and we can look at-
Yeah, I didn't talk about that one because it's just, okay? And that's all I have, thank you. The golf course is looking nice with some of the stuff you're doing, but it's-
Earl, I forgot, I do have a question for you. What, I assume, I know the answer to this. The trees that look like pencils that are still up, like on Turtle 4 right, that tree that's just sticking up there by itself and nothing else on it, you know which one I mean?
Yes.
There's like four or five of those throughout the course now. I assume those are going to be taken down, is that correct?
Most of those are going to be taken down. There are two that we've identified that we may actually put bird boxes in. We haven't 100% gotten their bird boxes.
Are they dead trees? Are they dead trees?
I hope so, they cut them to hell.
Yeah, they're dead ponds that we lent up while we had the lift so that we could drop them. Yeah, there's one on the right of four, there's one behind six green, yeah. Most of those will come down. There are a couple that are not where they're going to fall towards the cart path or something like that, that we're going to discuss whether we want to do a bird box or two to try to attract some eagles.
Somebody should get us a sculpture guy and come out and have a sculptor something there.
That's a board level decision, I have nothing to say about that.
Because he said he wouldn't pay for it, that we have to pay for it.
That is not in my current 2020 budget.
We're going to address those trees in the next 30 days?
Yes, that's all part of our trying to get ready for season. We're trying to wrap up the grinding of debris, all the stuff that went along with the tree work.
Okay, thanks.
Earl, the ground that was tore up by the hogs there on six on the side, have we got any idea of smoothing that out at all?
Yeah, we're actually going to probably wind up doing a little bit of bahia grass sod along there. I was hoping that through the summer with the rain and everything else, it would kind of go that way. I know Robin went out one time and top dressed some of the area, but there is an area near that bunker on six that we'll probably go in and just do bahia grass sod.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other staff reports? General Counsel.
We've got litigation and foreclosure report. Technically, the reports go through the end of August, but I went ahead and put, since we had talked about the Avanti issue, I put that on there. I'm going to be talking, trying to get ahold of Scott Lacony later on today, and if I can't, I'll be talking to him next week. So I'll be able to give you an update at the next board meeting on where we are with that potential litigation. Per the last board meeting, I've done some research on the gas tax issue. I'm continuing my research on that and been drafting a memorandum which I'll have for the next board meeting, but the cursory information that I have so far is there is no, I have not been able to find any direct way for the county, for the district to access funds from the Department of Revenue or what's known as the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund for municipalities. We are not a municipality, so if we cannot access that trust fund and there's nothing that, no statute I have been able to find that allows us direct access to money from the Department of Revenue, who is the one that collects the gas tax. So I'm continuing my research about some other potential avenues that we may have with regard to the county, and you'll have that memo before the next board meeting. Open any questions?
You know my position on it. Unless you find a no, we submit it and get told.
Okay, any unfinished business?
None, I just have a couple announcements. The shuffleboard courts are now complete, so I would like to, you know, invite the supervisors over for a picture. We're going to have a ribbon-cutting quick ceremony, so immediately following the board meeting, if all of us could meet over at the shuffleboard courts, that would be a great picture opportunity and we're going to submit an article to the newspaper. Staff is also currently working on the reimbursement, sending it to the county. If you remember, we did receive a 50% reimbursement, or we will be, for this project, so we're very excited to have this complete. Just a couple other things, Monday, September 28th, we have the meet and greet for the three candidates for the Board of Supervisors. So that's at the Island View Restaurant, 6 o'clock will, you know, is just a meet and greet, but 6:30 is when the actual meeting will start. That is a public meeting. And also, the Finance Department is working on, will be working on the final budget books now that they're complete, so we'll have those for you within the next couple, two, three weeks or so. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, sorry I missed that. Now unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Other comments? So now we can hear from anybody in the public who would like to question or share any thoughts.
My name is LT West. I live at 4547 Pebble Beach Strip, and I'm a golfer. I've been here since 05. Mike was talking earlier about people taking signs and stuff out of people's, off of people's property and out of yards and so forth. I've been putting political signs for Biden at a lot that I have permission to use from the owner who lives in Lake Worth, Florida, anyway. And my signs have been disappearing. I bought 43 signs and I've lost 32 of them. So I contracted with L&amp;J Electronics to put up a camera to see who was taking the signs. And I've got several photographs here of people, you might know some of them, I don't know them all, but I'm going to leave them with the board. I would like for it to stop. I've still got about 50 photographs with the Sheriff's Department, that's enough.
It's not, not funny at all.
The Sheriff's Department told me that they will issue warrants to have people arrested.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, Kim, I'd like to make a comment about that. I'm one of those culprits, whether it's on film or not, that's, I'm here to tell you that I would never, ever remove any kind of sign from anybody's property, number one. Number two, the signs were initially on the Sun and Lake, Woods and Irons, Sun and Lake property, even though that person owns the lot there. That property was maintained by the Deer Run Association and it was there. That's the reason, I removed a single sign, just to let you know. I am under the impression, and I will have to go back and look, that the district has a policy that no signs will be on their property, be it political, be it garage sales and things of that nature. However, what you could have, of course, is for-sale signs on houses. So I just want to make that full disclosure to everybody, so anybody that's listening to this tape will understand that I was following what I thought was a policy. Now, was I incorrect? I might have been, and I truly apologize for that, but I thought it was on Sun and Lake property by the curb, and that is not allowed by our policy. And I think I could quote the policy, but anyway.
Okay, well, I think the point is if there's a violation of Sun and Lake policy, the proper thing to do is to notify the district so that we can address it rather than individuals taking it in.
And you're absolutely correct, and traditionally in the past, I have called, okay? And the signs remain out there, be it yard sales or whatever, and remain out there for weeks sometimes, okay? So was I incorrect? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know. I just kind of followed what the policy said, no signs. Pardon me?
There's a lot of injustice.
Well, no, because I don't, no, I don't think it's appropriate or proper.
I don't disagree.
You know, and I have signs put on my property, one as a supervisor, along with many other supervisors, you know? Nothing came of that, okay? But anyway, full disclosure.
Okay, I would just advise, if the district isn't responding, by all means, call one of the supervisors and we will address it.
You're absolutely correct.
Hello, I'm Karen Emery, I'm also a resident of Sun and Lake. I've got a couple of things to share. I too feel that this was not his personal property to take off another person's sign. Political signs are all over Sun and Lake, and I question, why are the district's property huge Kaylee Tuck signs everywhere? I question that. Can someone answer that?
I can answer that. That's not, that's not district property where her signs are on. It's private property. The one over here, the one on Sun and Lake-
Sun and Lake?
Right, that's privately owned, oh, I'm sorry. That's privately owned. You have a Kevin Roberts there, you also had a Don, Don Elwell, they all had permission to have their signs on their property.
So I thought it was district's property because-
No, it's not. No.
That's what it's not.
And see, man, that's the problem, people are just assuming.
Well, that's why I'm-
Right, and they have no right to go on, you know, I mean, Mark had no right to do what he did, and I said that earlier.
Yeah.
Okay? LT, I have a letter right here saying he has right to use that property as of, up till today, after today, he won't be allowed, and I haven't talked to him about it yet, but I got a letter this morning from the lady, she does not want to have political signs on her property anymore. LT does not know that, Mark doesn't know that right now, but, I mean, this is where it's got to be right now, okay? So we will be removing the signs, and we do remove the signs, any signs that are illegal, we remove them. I probably have 50 in my office of AC, of whatever, doctor's offices, you know, whatever, okay? And we move them all the time, right? And it's constant, it's Saturday, Sunday, nights, everything. People come in, they put the signs, everybody knows the rules. But, like I said again, it's up to the district employees for us to move them, not anywhere else.
It's only for our own property.
For our own property, right, if they're on our own property. We do not, I mean, I know that, I've got some complaints of the people actually going on, moving the signs closer to the road. Maybe that's who they're backing, I don't know, but anyways, it's just, it's crazy, it's, you know?
I also had a question about the south entrance. I did see one tree taken down and there's a stump, but the south entrance, there's a lot of tree maintenance. It looks kind of shabby if you're coming in from that direction.
I'll answer that. Right now, we're addressing it. Ariel can let you know, we, Ariel, I mean, you can tell what we're doing out there, we're fixing the signs, putting more lighting.
It just looks a tree, everything looks shabby down there.
Well, we're on that right now.
Okay, and then the last, I knew you passed the ordinances to raise the pool. I did not hear any verbiage, I missed the last meeting. Why, what was the reasoning for raising pool rates? I would like to hear from the board.
The reasoning is we did an analysis, staff did an analysis that we reviewed that showed that the cost of maintaining that is still more than what we're getting in revenue and what we're trying to do is trying to even that out. We've raised revenue, we've raised rates in other areas as well, but the pool was way under what the market is and still isn't covering all the costs.
But I pay to be here a resident of-
I understand, I understand.
You raised mine double.
We're still subsidizing it. It hadn't been raised in a long time and we were just trying to get it a little bit closer to market, but it's still-
Market of what? What were your comparatives? I would like to know. The Y doesn't have, obviously, I thought we were keeping and maintaining the pool area, but I didn't, the last time I was here was mentioned you might have another pool added, which I would think fiscally irresponsible to go into debt for a pool, another pool. So I am curious still, I guess the comparatives, I've been kind of given the runaround, but I would like to know, what comparatives were you comparing?
Can you answer that one?
Sure, so we looked at the YMCA pool, they do have a lap pool. Omar, do you remember off the top of your head about what that was?
Annual membership.
The rate for that?
Annual was 500, individual was 400.
Right.
For the Y.
Right, for, so we were looking at local facilities, mainly the Y because that would be probably the closest to what we have at the rates in which they were charging, and as Omar just stated, probably around $400 for an individual membership annually to use the pool at the Y.
But still, you break that down annually, that's what, 40, 50 dollars a month? So you're going to jump us to 126 or 125 a month?
No, that's annually, that's the annual rate.
Yeah, I know that, but you're at-
So it's $10 a month.
So for your $10, so, okay, so you're saying you jumped it, we've more than doubled the price, which is absurd.
It went from $5 a month to $10 a month, that's what it went-
What we were saying from the board standpoint, it was a way too big a bargain at $5 a month. And yes, it sounds like a 50% increase is a lot.
It is, it's more than a lot.
Well, it is, it's a large percentage increase, but it is still a bargain and we just had not increased it in so long that it needed to be bumped up.
Well, I for one would disagree.
I understand.
Good morning, no kidding, Javita McKenney, resident. To calm your heart, I'm from Atlanta and the pools are more than at the Y. So I guess it's all relative of what you want to pay for what you get. And remember, what was I going to say? I came looking for something. That the, we're keeping other people out, we're not having public people come in and swim, which we could charge more for them and maybe make up that difference, but as a HOA, we don't want outsiders coming here to swim, so we have to take the price, we have to absorb, you know what I'm saying? Everybody doing a little.
Do you know that's clearly a problem?
Well, those are some reports I've heard, and if you like, continue to listen to the meeting minutes or something, or get in touch with Omar or the other people and ask more questions, you know, on the off days, I guess. Am I right about that? You always give them information if they call or email. I say email, I bug them, I'm telling you, I email them to Ariel. And so just email them and get on them about whatever. I'm sorry. So I came to share my concern about the rest- I'm sorry. So I came to share my concern about the restaurant, too, that is there still a stimulus, something grant he can get to see him through these things. That's just a suggestion. And then there is supposedly HCQ in Tampa. There's a COVID medicine. I happen to be doing governance work for a COVID nurse at Abbott Hospital. And she had given me some statistics that I guess I shouldn't share, but just do some more research to sort of help Mike out and all of us here. Because there are other avenues. There's medication, she said, that's out. Blah, blah, blah. So I know we have to wait till we fully open up, right? Because I had come here before. But maybe people can just get more comfortable with medications and prescriptions you can get. She said you have to ask your doctor. They won't tell you. But if you ask your doctor, most people, their Medicaid covers it even. COVID is very, the COVID medicine is very inexpensive, she said. And maybe people will feel a lot more comfortable going to the restaurants, increasing the numbers. It's just a gesture.
Yeah. Well, a lot of it I agree.
That's like a newsletter. Yeah, they have to look it up for themselves. What else did I have in mind? Oh, I was going to mention, though, people that are sending in petitions for that curb or whatever, even though it's maybe not policy to put an extra speed bump, if they're concerned, isn't that because we're residents here? Isn't that not enough?
No.
They sent in a petition is not enough.
It's enough. We're going to look at it. And we're going to look at it, but we have concerns about putting a bump there.
Okay. And I, like Mark, I have a confession. I was coming around that curve, and my shoe got stuck under the brake or something, and I hit the accelerator.
Not a good thing.
And I went like that around the curve, so stuff can happen. Had it been like a roughy gradient kind of thing, maybe that would have helped me. But it scared the life out of me. So stuff like that could be happening, and of course, people could be steep. So maybe consider doing that.
Yeah, but if your foot was stuck and you were speeding and you hit a hidden speed bump, it could be worse.
Yeah. So I was like, wow. So. But anyway, continue. Great work.
Mark Camp, I have to add a postscript to the last conversation I had. I don't know if LT was here. I've known LT for a long, long time. About, well, I say long, 10-plus years. We're neighbors and pretty close. So I don't know if he heard it. But first of all, I want to, he mentioned like 32 signs. And as I said, I took one down, LT. I don't know if you were here.
I took two.
No.
Two of your photographs shows two.
Okay. Maybe I took two. Okay. So all I wanted, I apologize, but you possibly weren't here. The signs, I believe, and I'm not going to get into a debate because I would have never taken the signs down, LT. They appeared to be on the Sun and Lake property, which is Woods and Irons there, okay? Now, I know there's a policy, and I mentioned this to the others. There's a policy that certain types of signs can't be on Sun and Lake property, okay? Just bear with me a second. Give me a chance. I know the person that owns the lot, and I say I know who they are. And that property there had been maintained. And I might be wrong. I'm not saying I'm 100% correct. It was my understanding that it was maintained by the Deer Run Association. People paid fees to maintain that property, which is no longer being maintained and should be maintained, quite frankly, by the district. And that would be one of the things I would be looking to have done. But because it was on what I believed was Sun and Lake property, and there's a policy, yes, I did remove it. And if you say it was two, I'm going to tell you, yeah, okay, fine, it was two. Now you went from two to three. Don't, you know, next it's going to be 32. Yeah, you know. I was under the impression, like I said, I'm not going to sit here and debate. I was. Then I want to see those. I want to see those. I challenge you to that right now.
Hey, this is a little inappropriate for public comment. Excuse me.
Well, it's inappropriate for him to say that. He's accusing me of something that's not true. And I don't take that lightly.
Take it outside of here.
Joe, I don't take that lightly.
I don't care. I don't either.
Well, he did for public comment, so I'm doing it for public comment.
I understand. But he addressed us at public comment. And any public comments should be addressed to us, not to the public.
Well, I was trying to apologize to him.
I understand what you were doing. I understand he didn't want to hear it. Just take it out. Yeah.
Dennis Swanson, resident. Earlier, you were mentioning carts you're going to get because you don't have enough carts?
No, this is our lease. We have a lease.
Yeah, but you want to rent extras, talking about.
Potentially, yes.
Well, I look at the little things, not as much as the big things. And what I've noticed is I've got a reputation being over in the driving range an awful lot. And I would venture that during the day, there's 10 or 15 of those carts used over there by people to hit balls. They're getting free carts to hit balls. Now, every one of those carts goes back. There's labor to clean them, and you're going to increase the usage, the wear and tear, et cetera, et cetera. When I came here, if you want to go over there, you park in a parking lot, carry the band-a-bag yourself. It just seems to me that everybody else should be doing that, too. And plus, you're taking that cart away from a customer. And the other thing is, you made a point about 38%. Well, next thing, the guy, next guy's coming, he's going to want 40. And then the next guy at that is going to want 42. So you've got to stop these things to begin with. And here's what I got to say about the carts. You have no signs on any of the entrances that you can't take unauthorized carts on the course. I was on number 15 with a group. We were getting up to tee-off. We turn around. Here comes some guy and his wife down the pathway. They didn't even, weren't even courteous enough to let us hit first. They just drove out in the middle of the fairway and drove down. I couldn't believe it. We were in such shock. We didn't even say anything to them. We probably should have. But all I'm saying to you guys is if you don't stop it now, it's going to get worse. You've got 54 new houses going up. How many people are going to be driving golf carts that maybe don't play golf? How many people are using the golf course as a shortcut to where they want to go? How many people have been out on the golf cart with the cart and damaged it? That's happened, unauthorized people. And I don't know, I heard about the kids. And I'm wondering if the police warned them so that they return their trespassing. And the parents are looking at a nice fine. I believe that's right. It's to be trespassing. And all this little stuff becomes big stuff. If you let the people run around on the golf course with carts that are unauthorized, you keep, we're going to keep growing and growing. A lot of people are workers. They can't afford to play golf. And you're going to have all these carts running around because you don't nip it in the bud, just like you said. 38% Y. If that's not, the next house is going to want 40, and you're going to keep going up. Some guy's going to come in and say, I want to swim in my front lawn. And you're going to have to do it. All I'm saying is if you make a rule, enforce it, and keep it. I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong. Can I, I'll just, Dennis, I'll tell you what. I'll talk to the, your point about the golf carts and people driving to the range and not playing golf with them, you're absolutely right on. And I will personally talk to the golf course today, the people there, and see what we can do to fix it. One day, okay, this has happened more than once. One day I was there, and these two guys were over there hitting balls. They hit balls for, I don't know, half an hour. All of a sudden, they disappeared. 45 minutes later, they're coming back down Columbus Ballpark. I guess they might have been up having coffee, or maybe they're playing golf or nothing. I mean, if people are just using the range, they don't need a cart. You're absolutely right. I don't even understand why that started. Because you don't have any members using free carts to go over there and hit balls. I'll talk to the people there, and we'll get that part fixed. That part I think we can address.
That's not an accurate statement.
Well, it's not accurate.
If members use carts, if they show up early and their wives play golf.
No, I'm talking about people I know that are there that aren't members.
I'm saying in the United States, that members that use those free carts.
Okay. I'm sorry. 80% of the time, it's not members. Because I know the guy's going over there, and I know they're not members. I see them all the time. I mean, if people are using the carts just to go to the driving range, you're right. I mean, I got no problem with a member doing it. But when I first came here, you charged $5 for a member to use a cart if their other cart was used. I got to go over there later. I don't know what happened with that. I mean, that's all right. I don't care. But if you're going to make rules, enforce them.
Tony Hicks. I don't play golf.
What was that?
All right, go ahead and say that again, Mike.
Can you hear me? All right. So our current policy with people using carts for the range, if we have carts available, we're going to let people take carts to the range. We don't want to develop any reason to give people to not come and use our facility and spend money here. I mean, we do a good enough job chasing people off all the time. And to tell people they need to walk over to the driving range and we have good carts available is kind of ridiculous, in my opinion. Now, if the golf course is busy and we need to utilize those carts for the golf course, then absolutely, yes, we have in the past said, listen, we do not have any carts available. You're going to have to walk over to the range today. That does happen, but I don't think we need to chase off business. We have a lot of guys that come and spend hundreds of dollars a year to use our driving range because we have a great facility. And I don't know if we necessarily want to chase that business away just to watch a cart sit in the parking lot.
I'd be willing to bet you, without any reservation, that you're losing at least one bucket of balls being paid for on that course every day of the year. And that's $3,600. Nobody cares. I've seen guys, I had a guy try to run me over. He had two buckets in his truck or in his car, and he tried to run me over about it because I was trying to stop him. I watched a lady take two bags of balls, walk over, put American Daughters golf bag. That's all lost money. If you don't take care of your nickels and dimes, your dollars are going to hell.
Okay. I think we're ready for you.
I find this all very fascinating. My name is Tony Hicks. I don't play golf, but I have had lessons, been on golf courses. I'm from California.
They're saying they can't hear you. If you can pull the mic a little closer.
Is that better?
Yes.
Tall men. Tony Hicks is my name. I don't play on a consistent basis. The last time I played golf was probably 10 years ago. But I have $3,000 golf clubs in my garage. I moved here knowing the association fees. I am on social security. My husband's almost 80 and in poor health. I'm going to lose him shortly. My income will drop with his social security considerable. I am a member of the Y. It comes with my insurance, and it's free. The only thing I use is the pool. I was stunned to find out that I had to pay $64 in order to go and do exercises. I do not swim, but exercising seemed like a nice thing to do for myself and my health. I can get in my car. I can drive over to the Y and go free. Most of us seniors have that availability. But the Y pool is humongous, full of children, where ours is private, full of people our age. So when you compare an Olympic-sized pool with a small one that is suitable for this, I don't think there's any comparison. You can't even look at the two pools in a photograph and compare them. You are lacking revenue. You have a humongous golf course. A restaurant, who I learned the name after four years' residence this week. I ate there once. The food did not stand out. So I pick restaurants according to food and atmosphere and price. The food did not stand out to me. We eat out three times a week. My husband is a chef, so I like to eat at home. I know the cook. The kitchen's clean. The only thing I remember about my event in the restaurant was that we got the special, and the food was good, and the service was good. So to me, in my mind, right now, the price wasn't all that great. And not knowing the name after four years is very interesting to me as a consumer because there's us, the restaurants we eat at. The golf course is an interesting thing. Coming from California, and I lived in Myrtle Beach for five years. Why are you guys having trouble? I never was on a golf course where you got free carts. But if that's the way you want to work it, that's fine. But not to have it organized, or you're losing balls, or... I mean, the pennies do count. I pick up pennies on the street when I find them. They do add up. So why are you consistently, I understand the growth. You want a certain amount of growth. But are we maintaining what we have? Why are you increasing in a senior complex, is the way I bought into this? Why are you hitting us with more, needing more revenue? In that sense, I mean, I'm on Ponce de Leon. I pay city taxes, and I also pay for the association. And now, with $120 annually, I probably will not use the facilities at all. I know you don't really care about one person. But aren't there more than that many people in this complex? Why are we being hit with this? When was the last time social security went up? You know, there's a cost of living, and we're not getting it. And we're the seniors. I mean, we're not the young people. We're not going to, nobody's going to give me a job. I'm 75 years old. I don't have a retirement fee. If everybody's supposed to have a retirement fee at my age, I mean, retirement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board for any board-to-board. Whoops, sorry.
Just quickly, Cliff Wood, resident. Is Mike still on the line? Guess not. It's okay. No, it's all right. I would venture to say that the driving range, in terms of return on investment, is probably one of the most lucrative operations we have at the club. And since we don't have good parking facilities close to the driving range, anything that we can do to accommodate people to get more utilization out of the driving range, we ought to be doing within reason.
Okay. Did I miss anybody else? Okay. Bring it back to the board for board-to-board discussion. Anyone? Nope? Everybody's talked out? Seeing no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned. And hopefully, the board can all go over and take pictures of the facility.
Make sure nobody talks inappropriately. No inappropriate discussions during the photo opportunity.